Noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. So, we'll get started. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm going to start with public participation. I know we're starting right off, but is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Before we move on? Okay, great. Alright, so then let's get started with Mr. Crane, McCarthy Town School presentation. If you will come up. We are also, just a reminder, we are being taped.
So I'd like to welcome Mr. Crane, and he'll introduce some staff members that are with him. But I'd also like to take the opportunity to congratulate David. David recently completed all the requirements and successfully defended his dissertation for his doctorate degree. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bill. I was afraid that was gonna happen.
I apologize, Dr. Crane.
Thanks. Well, thank you very much. It's great to be here tonight. I'd like to introduce three of the staff members from our phenomenal school, McCarthy Town. Heather Wilson, Carrie James, and Heather Matthews. Tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about something that's really critical to our school. Integrating art into the curriculum has been an important part of the identity of McCarthy Town for many years. Our parent community has continued to support a position of an art integrationist as an essential component of the student experience at McCarthy Town. And tonight, we'll be giving all of you a closer look at what art integration looks like in our school. This past year, our entire faculty has attended a series of professional learning workshops about art integration on select Thursday afternoons that were developed by a faculty committee, part of which is standing right here. Part of the original goal was to help newer faculty members to develop a greater understanding of art integration and also strategies for implementation. While this goal was certainly achieved over the course of the year so far, what also emerged was an extraordinary exercise in community building. Our teachers were taking risks with their artwork. They were showing incredible resilience in many, many instances, and they were all persisting in their efforts to improve their work. These are all elements that we encourage children to explore themselves as learners. The resiliency piece also aligns really very nicely with some of the work that we've been doing with students around social-emotional learning. Developing the capacity to become more resilient is critical as kids learn how to navigate in a social environment like a classroom, or a school, or the larger community around us. So tonight, Heather, Carrie, and Heather are going to be presenting this PowerPoint about what goes on. We will look forward to questions afterwards. Thanks. Which button is it, Beth? The right?
So, what we're about to show you is just a general overview of what art integration looks like at McCarthy Town. So, we put together the PowerPoint to share with our PTSO and also with the staff and the faculty at McCarthy Town. So, we wanted to just kind of give a basic overview and kind of history and philosophy of art integration. So, in addition to having art as a special where the students go to, we also integrate art fully into the classroom, and it kind of combines and goes along with the curriculum that we teach in the classroom. And when we do it this way, we feel that it really gives the kids a deeper understanding of whatever it is that we are working on. So whichever unit we're doing, we have art projects to go along with that, and it just leads to a different kind of experience for them. So, the idea of it being a process is one of the things that's really important about art integration, that there isn't necessarily like a preconceived notion, or a model, or a way that things are supposed to look. We'll give the kids instruction about how to get them started, but then it's pretty much up to them to kind of take it where it leads them. So, through doing this, they can kind of create their own experience and have their own challenges and strengths through that process.
Can I draw up in one second? This is a part of the unit on Acton Long Ago, which is a very important, it's taught across the district. Can anybody tell me what those things are? Brain stumps?
I was hungry when I read the packet. I thought it was pasta.
Actually, carpet beaters. It's one carpet beater.
Yeah.
So, one of the things, so you can see the different ways that kids look at, and I think that everybody will get to the way we perceive, we look at kids' perceptions of certain objects.
Right, so for this example, we, with the Acton Long Ago unit, we have a lot of artifacts, so the kids go around and they make guesses about what different things are. So, they may, I don't think they would've come up with brain stumps, maybe pasta, but, you know, things like, they think it might be decoration, they often think it's a pizza paddle, so they have a great time kind of looking at it that way. And then, when we get to focus in a little bit more with the art piece, they've already had some experience with it. And it's great, they just come out all different, even though, as David said, it's the same item. Another part that's important about having art in the classroom is that the children are really using quality materials, so they're not just using, you know, regular old crayons and colored pencils that you, you know, can get anywhere. They really are using high-quality materials, so that when they are doing some coloring with colored pencils, they can see that it's, you know, what they're using is smooth over the paper. It really fills it in, and it's just a different experience using those high-quality products. Sorry, one more thing. So, and also, within that, there's also exposure to all different kinds of media, so they'll use colored pencils for some, sometimes they'll be doing collage, other times they'll be doing painting, so we incorporate all different kinds of medium for them to use within the classroom as well. So, this here is an example, we're working on our study of Ghana, and so the students have a picture of one of the animals that we've been talking about as part of the unit, and then they take those pictures and they look at those, and they use that to then paint their own version of that animal. And one of the things that we really talk to them about, too, is that idea of working from the inside out. So, instead of that idea of kind of drawing an outline, and the only place you have to go from there is just kind of inside, and you sort of start yourself closed off to begin with, this one, if they start in the middle, then they can just kind of expand and grow from there. And this is just another, she's a little farther along in the process there.
I can't do that now.
Well, I know, I mean, that's... We get trained to think we can. So, here, perfect. So, again, that idea of what David was kind of touching upon a little bit is just how important it is for the kids to have this type of experience in school, that the idea is, you know, that since there isn't a specific way that things are supposed to look, they might start out one way, and then as they're working, it might kind of go in a different direction. It may not be exactly how they had planned it from the beginning, but they have that capacity to be able to say, "Okay, well, I'm gonna work with where I ended up and see where it takes me from there," as opposed to taking the work that they've done and just kind of scrapping all of that and starting over again. So, I mean, and it takes some work. We need to support them and work through that with them. This student was working on a turkey, and he wasn't exactly happy with how it had come out, but, you know, we talked a little bit about it, and he ended up adding another piece and cutting another piece off and then connecting it that way. So, again, that idea of just, "Okay, it didn't work out exactly how you planned, but let's see what we can do from there." Also, that idea of the timeframe, that really, depending on the project, there are some projects, and depends what kind of medium we're using, sometimes we'll do a watercolor, and then go back to it and add collage on top of that. So, the timeline is just kind of ongoing for a number of these projects. It's not like an isolated, "Okay, you're gonna do this project, and then you're gonna do this one," but really kind of having it open, and they can go back to it and continue that way. The other piece is having kids talk about their artwork, instead of, you know, kind of looking at things and saying, "Oh, that's a really great picture that you drew," or "That's really pretty," kind of getting them to think about it a little bit differently. So, again, this is part of our Acton Long Ago unit, so they're looking at a typewriter, which of course, to them, is an artifact. So, but, you know, instead of saying, "Oh, well, you know, that's a really good one," or "That one really looks like a typewriter," or "That one doesn't really look like a typewriter," they might say, "Oh, well, that person at the top, in the top picture, you were really noticing the way that the top part of that typewriter has those arches. And the middle person, it seems as though they were really looking at the keys on there, and that's kind of what jumped out to them. And the person on the bottom seemed to be really interested in kind of the mechanics of it, the way that that slide goes in and out." So, getting them to talk about it and to go a little bit deeper in their thinking, and they're working with each other that way, too.
You know, the other thing is, this connects to the work that we do in these workshops, because we ask kids to partner up and talk about what their books are. They may be different books, they may be the same, but it's always about perspective. And I think that even in first grade, they can talk about this kind of stuff, just the way that they can see it and put it on paper.
And sometimes, like, just recently, I was just hanging some displays from our Ghana unit, and it sparked this natural conversation between two kids. "Oh, look at yours is hanging up there, and I really like the way you," and it was just so amazing. I sort of stepped back and just listened, because it was so natural and so impromptu, but it was just really warming to hear them talk about their own work and compliment each other in such a natural way.
And I think they get a lot of modeling, getting away from what Carrie was talking about, of, "Oh, that's good," or "Yours is the best." We modeled, "What did you notice? Where did you start? Where do you think this person started? What were they most interested in? What was challenging for you? Oh, what did you do about that?" And, you know, at the end of the day, they're not always completely satisfied with their work, but they stuck with it and have something there to look at.
And then, this is a quote from Margot Growart, who was at McCarthy Town since the old days, and just, I think it really speaks to just the importance of art integration itself, and just how much it can lead to, and just, again, that idea of supporting the kids and just really giving them a different lens, and there's so many things that they can gain from doing the artwork in the classroom. It's not just about how things look at the end of the project. It's really much more than that. Heather's gonna talk a little bit about some of the work that we've done from the Art Committee, and in terms of working with the staff on Thursday afternoons. Feel free to chime in.
So, we had this great opportunity to use our Thursdays on professional development, on art integration, and some of us have been at McCarthy Town for years and have had lots of experience with the projects, and there's lots of new teachers. So, it was great for everyone to sort of be reinvigorated in all of this. In every meeting that we had, you know, we looked at all of these topics. Some people wanted perspective on why do we do this at school, and got a presentation sort of like you did tonight. Some people needed help generating ideas. Everybody wanted, "Well, so how do you manage this?" And you can see all the things we touched upon. So, our goal in every session that we had, there were four things. One is, everybody at each session would have an opportunity to work with art materials like the students did, so we set up different projects, so that teachers were working on things that kids do in the classroom. Every week, we had an opportunity to visit different classrooms and see how work was displayed, see how materials were set up, see how projects were managed, and we could get so many ideas from each other. Teaching is a very isolating profession, and we don't have time. We might see the classroom next door, but it was so exciting to go into so many classrooms. So, we worked with materials, we visited other classrooms, we deepened our knowledge of one aspect of art integration, and our hope was that every week, everybody came away with something that they could try and work on in their classroom. It was a true collaborative effort with a group of teachers and our art integration specialists and our art teacher. And in some ways, we feel like we've just scratched the surface of that. At our very last, the last session that we had, we allotted a lot of time for people to break into groups with their grade level and explore different websites, and think about a unit that doesn't have projects that they're happy with, and take the time to explore and plan things. And there's just this buzz, because everyone's excited to do different things.
So, can I jump in here?
Yeah.
So, we're adding three sections of students next year. So, we're gonna have a new crop of teachers, who are gonna be able to take in this new knowledge and begin to apply it again. So, I think this is something that's been so successful, I believe, that we can use it to continue on with the work with new teachers, too.
So, we've gotten a lot of great feedback from teachers, but I'm at the end of a unit right now with work on Japan, and so the work that we've done together inspired me. As I packed all of the students' artwork into bags and got it ready to go home, I thought, you know, our families need more context about what's happening, because sometimes an individual piece of work, maybe it doesn't look like much when it comes home, but if you put it in the context of what Carrie was talking about, that it was an artifact that we learned about, so for each project that we did, I described the different materials that we used, what we were looking at, what we had learned about, and why this particular project was developed to help deepen our understanding of the culture of Japan. So, because I think the kids have so much to be proud of, and what happens with them is the same thing that happens with the adults when they're working on a project, is the conversation between them, and what they hear and what they talk about when they're working on something is really exciting. It's part of what deepens the knowledge, is it's not solitary. So, it's part of that natural, social piece that particularly kids have, but we all have it. And the natural reaction that you have of, "Oh, I couldn't do that!" I think every, you know, all of our faculty has some of those same reactions, and what I think is wonderful about our students is, from the moment they arrive at McCarthy Town, they have so much experience with this, that they're not always thinking about how beautiful the final product is. They're like, "Ooh, ooh, we get to use tempera paint today? Hmm, what kind of brush? Ooh, oh, that's gonna be fun." You know, it's more that kind of reaction. But one of our sessions was all about how to talk to students about art, because certainly we have people who say, "Hmm, I can't do that," or, as Carrie mentioned, they wanna crumple it up, and, you know, that's the perseverance and risk-taking that is happening with an art project, is the same kind of work that's happening with a math problem, or a writing project, or, you know, reading a book and sharing conversation about it. So, those skills are just worked on in a different way, but they're important in all settings. What did I leave out?
So, this is the agenda that we came up with based off of the survey we gave. We gave our faculty a survey, just asking them questions about what they wanted to know, and how we could as a...
Committee.
Committee.
Support them, yeah.
Support them. And so, this, oops, sorry. This is just the outline that we came up with. So, each of those bullets are basically the different weeks that we met and the different topics that we went over. So, that is that, and then this is just...
That's what fifth grade bios.
Yeah, so they were studying biospheres, and they wanted to incorporate art into that project. They hadn't had that in the past, so...
We all got ideas for, "Ooh, we could use collage. Oh, I never thought of using tissue paper for this. That'll be great." You know, there was just so much sharing that went on from seeing the work in different classrooms.
I really have to compliment the committee, too, because they did an enormous amount of planning and an enormous amount of work to go into the Thursday afternoons, which this year, as everybody knows, we're in a different place, but we found them to be, you know, to have that time available for us to work on something that's important to our school and to involve new teachers, it actually developed almost a curriculum of its own that we're gonna be able to use with new teachers as they come. And I'm hoping that next year, we're gonna be able to use this as a tool to educate families as they come in to have a greater understanding of the things that are important to our school. So, this was a timely presentation to make to all of you, and, you know, I really wanna thank you all for that opportunity for the Thursday afternoons to do this kind of thing, because it has freed us up to really look more deeply.
It's given us that time.
Right, yeah.
But we hope you have questions, 'cause we love talking about this. Any questions? Paul?
So, I did not have the benefit of this kind of education, and I think I would've loved it. What I find is it legitimizes the individual perspective, and I find that empowering. Thank you.
Can I just comment a little bit further on that? So, even some of the projects we do, we might have an artifact, again, I'm just gonna use a Ghana statue as one of the artifacts that we've been using. So, it will be placed in the middle of the table, and depending on where the kids are sitting, they will draw it from the perspective that they see it from. So, I just, you know, kind of goes along with that idea of, you know, they'll just notice different ways of looking at things and different perspective-taking, too.
I also think it taps into kids that might struggle in other ways, academically or socially, and it's another way for them to express themselves or feel a success that they might not feel in a different area of their learning.
Mary?
This makes me think, you know, I've always been amazed, I'm in a situation, and I hear somebody else's perspective, and it's totally different than mine, and we were in the same situation. And so, I wonder, does this open up other conversations about something they've read, and what they think about it, and let them have more understanding and tolerance of different perceptions through that?
So, we anecdotally think that's true, of course, but...
And that's also, I think, part of the goal, because that's what we're trying to do. I mean, all the things that are important to us in our school have something to do with conversation, relationships, and interactions with other kids. Workshop, responsive classroom, and this. And there is a thread that runs through all of the things that we do, and we'd like to hope that that perspective-taking, as they learn how to build relationships and manage their time in various situations, is working.
No one is doing this. I just wanna thank you so much for having the courage to keep doing this in an environment where the movement is toward standardizing everything and centralizing everything. This is, this district, I feel like, is like the last holdout for a laboratory of innovation that education is supposed to be. And when I see things like this, I like looking at different models of education, and they're doing this kind of thing at places like the Carroll School, where kids can't access written text easily, so they'll learn history through art primarily, and then the text will be more supported. But this is just a beautiful thing, and I really appreciate the commitment to it and the care with which you kind of nurture this modality that is just so critical for some students, and really, all students. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Diane, you're so articulate. You really are. No, I have similar comments. So much of what we find, you know, later in life is working together and not working so much as individuals, and this just fosters so much of that. I think it was the last bullet on the page that had the survey information with all the colored bars. It just sort of struck me, is that kind of sums it all up, what this allows kids to do and gives them the freedom to do. I'm also struck by the fact that most of my education was spent working on an artifact, the typewriter. Thanks so much for that. Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Another, I just wanna point out that by the time our students get to eighth grade, what I understand is that teachers can't tell from which school they come, which tells me...
That's what we hear.
...that the academic performance is as successful as any other.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for listening.
Our next presentation tonight is from the Douglas School, and Dr. Whitbeck is here, and he will introduce the members of his staff that will be making the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having us. With me tonight is Jenna Lurenega, my assistant principal, and Katie Oxnard, one of our sixth grade teachers. We're going to, they're going to talk about two aspects of the Douglas School that we've worked on really helping to meet our vision, and our vision really works with the school system mission and vision of wellness, engagement, equity. And our words that are found in our vision is, "We want students to experience joy and be brave, have an opportunity to be brave, be wonderful, be proud, and to feel valued." And so, we think a lot about, you know, what do we do, what experiences do we provide students, so that they can experience those senses of wonder and pride and so forth. Two aspects of life at Douglas School really reflect that. One is our work with Responsive Classroom. When we talk about being valued, there is a very important experience that children go through of just knowing that people know your name. And one of the things that Jenna and I noticed last year, we greet buses every morning. We stand out there, winter, spring, and very few children would say hello to us when we... And we stand out there and we say hello, and they would just walk right by us. And so, one of the things we worked on in Responsive Classrooms are greetings. What do you do when you see somebody? It was becoming a lost art. So, Jenna will talk more about the great work of Responsive Classroom, and then Katie's going to talk about our exhibition. So, a keystone of Douglas School is exhibitionary learning, providing students with a question at the beginning of each semester that they can't possibly answer. And through our somewhat traditional instruction, somewhat project-based instruction, the students take those skills, and they keep applying it little by little to that question until they really know the answer, and then they have a public exhibition of their learning. And Katie's going to give an example of that, and that really encompasses all of the aspects of our vision. You have to be really brave to stand up in front of people that you don't know as a sixth grader and explain, you know, what the work that you've done. So, Jenna?
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to come tonight. We're really happy to be here. Responsive Classroom is an approach to educating and working with children that focuses on building community, both in the classroom and school-wide. As a building, we have, for the last three years, been implementing different pieces and components of Responsive Classroom. This year, we started the year with rule creation, and that has two pieces. One is in the classroom itself, where the teachers meet with the kids and they talk about their hopes and dreams for the year, and then they mold that into, "How are you going to achieve your hopes and dreams? And what does your behavior need to look like? And how do you need to act in order to achieve?" And from there, they build a classroom contract that encompasses their thoughts on that. And everyone signs it, and it's displayed in the classroom. This year, we had a copy of all of them, and we hung them in the lobby to build a real sense of unity around a sweeping change we were trying to make. As a building, we met with children, delegates from each classroom, over the course of several weeks, where they came with their own ideas around what the building rules should look like. And that was really fascinating, because you have all different ages with lots of different ideas, and then they have to collaborate and communicate and build a small number of rules. So, it was wonderful. They landed on be kind and respectful to yourself, others, and materials, bosh your body and be safe around others, and be a responsible member to the school community, and reach out to others who might need a friend. And it's great, because when we work with children, we can come back to that. Usually, things that happen, you can put it under an umbrella of one of the three things that our school is focusing on. The other big component of this year has been morning meeting. A morning meeting traditionally has four parts: a greeting, a sharing... A morning meeting traditionally has four parts: a greeting, a sharing. I'm drawing a blank. A greeting, a sharing, an activity, thank you, and a morning memo from the teacher. And it serves a really important purpose. You want to build a strong sense of classroom community. And you start the day by everybody hearing their name. Chris spoke about that briefly. But the sense of belonging, there's a lot of research that ties that to kids feeling valued and comfortable in school. And that's really important to nurture. We explicitly teach social skills, like making eye contact, waiting your turn, and taking turns. They also practice speaking in front of a group. The tone is set for the day. It's very important. In our school, every day from 9:00 to 9:20, everyone is involved in morning meeting. So if you were to walk in, you would see every teacher in a classroom and every child involved. The administration and the counseling departments have paired. And we've worked through this year a rotation of being in each classroom four times. And we've concentrated on different themes each time we've gone in. We've talked about friendship, kindness, acceptance, and grit. So an example of how we talked about grit was we varied it for the different ages. With the older kids, we showed a video of Derek Redmond's 400-meter run in the 1992 Barcelona Olympics. I don't know if any of you have ever seen it, but you should Google it. He falls down halfway through the run, tears a hamstring, and his dad comes out onto the course, talks the official into letting him finish the race with him, and together they cross the finish line. So that just opens up a world of conversation with the kids around, how do you get to the finish line? How important is all of your hard work? With the little kids, we read a book called Flight School, which is about a penguin who wants to learn to fly. But penguins can't fly. So he goes through all this work and all of this practice. And the kids around, the penguins and the birds around him support him. And they give him the technical pieces and they tie him to a flamingo and he flies out. So again, it totally wraps together this idea that grit is important. So that's how we implemented other things into our morning meeting. We talked to teachers today about what they thought the impact was on the school. And I have a couple quotes I'd like to share. There's an increase in door holding. Within my classroom, the students who might not typically take a risk have the chance to lead morning meeting, and all the students enjoy it. Morning meeting is the best part. The students see it as a great equalizer and they are good to one another because of this time. There is an increased sense of collaboration amongst the teachers as we work together to model and teach expected behavior. The students get a lot of practice on how to conduct themselves and how to treat other people because we are teaching behavioral expectations. And a student overheard me asking a teacher, and he piped in and said, "I love morning meeting because we get to talk in the morning and everyone gets ready for the day." We are very proud of our teachers and our students for all the work that they've done to continue to foster a very positive, welcoming, and warm environment at Douglas. Now Katie Oxnard will talk about exhibitionary learning.
I know these are hard to see. Again, my name is Katie Oxnard. You've got the best view. Yeah. Don't worry. You'll have a chance to take a look at these in another forum, and I'll get to that in a minute. I'm Katie Oxnard. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Douglas School. Exhibitionary learning, what is it? Chris touched on it. And I, the way I would describe it is it's driven, it's teaching and learning that's driven by, number one, a compelling question, and number two, a public product. The whole product piece of it is, can be hard to get your brain around. But Chris described it once, and I often explain this to my parents and I come back to myself, is think of the creation of something that has never existed before. So that's what I try to keep in mind as we're working towards the product piece of our exhibition. But frankly, I've found that the best exhibitions really lean heavily on the question. And the product piece will take care of itself and kind of come into a form of itself. So you might say, where does this compelling question come from? It might come straight from the content area that you teach. For me, that would mean maybe in the areas of science or social studies. And I like to gravitate towards social studies because I get to teach Egypt and Greece, and it's really fun. One year, I, the compelling question essentially was, what would it look like if our classroom became ancient Egypt? And so that led to, you know, some traditional reading and writing activities and learning about the geography and farming and social structure and architecture and so on of ancient Egypt. But it allowed the kids to ultimately find their own niche, something that really they found most interesting, and then go really, really big with it. Because on the one hand, when we started moving to the project part of this exhibition, you know, you might think, the way I describe it, what's the difference between learning about Egypt and then building a pyramid made out of sugar cubes? Well, I would say in my exhibition, it was twofold. Number one, the size and the scope and the scale was enormous. I mean, my kids literally took over my classroom. Two walls were covered. One was the Nile River, and it had water that was flowing down it. And it had fish that she researched and found out what fish swim in the Nile. And they were there at the end of the Nile River. Not to be outdone, a couple of other students took another wall and turned it into the fields. They literally, I didn't even have a whiteboard to walk, to write on for several weeks. So as they were building this field, you know, and I had a sarcophagus that was six feet long and all this sort of thing. So the scale was impressive. But really, what I thought made this exhibition, really put it in the exhibition category, was back to the compelling question, what would it be like if our classroom became ancient Egypt? And so what that meant was, anyone walking in, even my guests, my parents, they kind of picked out of a bag the role of somebody, an Egyptian, before they came into the room, they became a slave. Well, they didn't really become a slave. They drew out slave, or scribe, or pharaoh. And they were expected to be able to, they could go to any student in the classroom and learn about how their pyramid or sarcophagus or the Nile or the fish related to them and in their level of the social pyramid. It was a phenomenal experience for everybody. The other exhibition that I really would love to talk about, I guess, goes back to the question, where does the compelling question come from? For me, if it doesn't come from the content area, it comes from just somewhere else. And most recently, the somewhere else came from a teacher workshop that I attended in Chicago last summer, where I got to work with the Chicago Architecture Foundation studying skyscrapers. But essentially, the workshop challenged us teachers to think about place-based learning. In other words, the buildings around us tell a story. They talk about the social history, the economic history, the geographical history of wherever you are. So we were challenged to go back to our town and find a building or a set of buildings and use that as a window or a lens into history. And so I thought, wow, I'm from Acton. We have Route 2A. Like, what kind of buildings do we have? Then it came to me. I said, oh, Acton Memorial Library. What's it memorial to? I don't even know. So I did some initial research as long ago as last summer and found a treasure trove of information right here on Main Street. So my compelling question became, if our library could talk, what might it say? So that led us into many, many different, down many paths. We used lots of, we found lots of primary sources through the library: Civil War-era documents, correspondence, newspaper articles from the Beacon from 1967, from 1998, brochures, photographs. We took a field trip to the library and we did architectural sketches of the front and the back. What do we notice? What's the same? What's different? Why is a library made out of bricks? I mean, we, the questions just started coming. And then, and the research took us in many different directions. So as we started thinking about, or I started thinking about, so what do we do with all of this information that we're learning, came back to the driving question. If the library could talk, what could it say? So we wrote a script. The library talked. The library came to life. And every one of my 24 students had a part to read. So we performed essentially a narrated, kind of an oral interpretation, I would say, in the classroom. And I'm so excited by this project. It was just phenomenal. And I worked closely with some people from the library throughout the fall while this was going on. They were part of, they were in the classroom on our exhibition day. And they were just so thrilled that any, that people were taking interest in the library and learning the history of the library and all this sort of thing. So we are taking our exhibition on the road. And in fact, during the month of May, you are welcome to come into Acton Memorial Library, come upstairs to the second floor, into the tour area and all around. All of my students' work will be on display. And kind of the capstone of our exhibition, which was that narrated dramatic reading that we did in January, we've digitized it. So we've recorded it. And so it's my students' voices. It's their script that they wrote. And I have overlaid photographs and archival images from the library. And it's a 30-minute documentary-style movie that is actually going to have a special screening at the library next Wednesday night, May 2nd, at 7:00. You're invited. And if you can't make it then, the YouTube link will be made available online. But all, my students' work will also be at the library. So anyway, that's the, kind of the end game on this particular project that we've been working on. And it's been a fabulous experience for the kids and for myself.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to questions. From the committee? Diane?
Did the students work with primary sources, either photographic or textual, for this library?
For this most recent project, it was almost entirely primary sources. And what that meant was, for example, one day, I said, well, what was it like in Acton during the Civil War? The Memorial Library is a memorial to Civil War veterans. So there, there's lots and lots of correspondence available that you could just go right online and find. So I found some documents, some letters that were written to the soldiers who, that talked about life in Acton. And they grow apples and pumpkins, and it snowed, and they went to dances, and they ice skated, and they did all these things. And we read about them in these letters from 1863 and 1862 and so on. We read correspondence written to Luther Gahanet in 1889 by William Wild, who was the benefactor of the library. We read brochures that they put together in 1998, in 1996, '07, as they were trying to build that big expansion. If you lived here, you may remember that. I remember why, that it was, you know, the contention in town was, why do we need to add on to the library? We've got the internet. The internet's going to put the library out of business. This was in 1995, 1996. I remember this. I found articles in the Beacon, opinions written to the, letters to the editor. I found those. We read those. They, they, so to the extent possible, it was primary sources. The only secondary sources that we used for this particular project was a brochure put together by the library that documented essentially the first 100 years of the library from 1890 to 1990. So technically, that's a secondary source, but, you know, it's not really widely available. And it was put together by the library itself. Photographs, the librarian there had photos of that old building from, and the demolition of the 1967 building and the building of this new building. So we, we used those. It was phenomenal. It was phenomenal.
Oh, go ahead.
I should just say that Katie is probably the master of primary sources. She's worked with Eleanor Duckworth in the Harvard Graduate School of Education. What do they call it?
Critical exploration.
Critical exploration. And it's a methodology for investigating anything that is initially you are unable to access. And the work that she does with students around that is absolutely incredible. They did one exhibition, what was the Greek text that you studied with?
Oh, it's from Herodotus.
A translation.
Six graders, yeah, reading Herodotus and understanding it.
Yeah.
There's a way to do it, so.
And then taught all of the adults.
How we went about doing that, yeah. So.
Sorry. So I'm just going to get back on my laboratory of innovation soapbox because I just think it's one of the standout features of this district. So I think that it was almost like not helpful to bring the exhibits because it's the process that is so exciting. And the, and the product doesn't even, I mean, it's hard to capture process when you're just looking at a product. But I, and the questioning, the excitement that's generated to the point where that flood of question comes, because if you think about it, like, school is, can be very much like regurgitate information, learn, test, you know, all that, all that stuff. But the most powerful learning is authentic learning, where you're generating questions. And all of a sudden, this flood of questions come. And you're asking the question, what did Chris say at the beginning? You're asking the question that you cannot possibly answer. That is so powerful and so much authentic learning and powerful as a, just something that we need going forth as people living in the world, inventing things. I mean, that's what Steve Jobs was asking. And so I just, I want to thank you also for the presentation. It's just very exciting to hear what all the schools are doing.
You make me wish I were in primary school again. What I like here is that the students take ownership. And, and not just for the learning, but for a more holistic, you know, approach to being a member, not just an individual, but, but in the context of a community. So I applaud that.
And that's, if I may, one of the aspects of being valued. When, when we are working on exhibitions, everybody has a role in it that is very, very, very important and will not get done unless you're there. So kids know, you know, I've got to be here because people are depending on me. And that sense of being valued, you can't replace it in any other way.
Right, thank you. I know my, my kids were part of the Egypt. EJ was in the sarcophagus. It was, it was amazing. It was amazing. It's a great question. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Bill for number six, the Battery Storage Project Agreement.
Thank you, Amy. And as they head out the door, thank you to our guests for those great presentations. Thank you. So the Battery Storage Project Agreement. There were a number of questions about this agreement that came forward. And I provided some additional information, or at least the answers to the questions that were posed. And as a result, given the complexity of both the questions and the responses, we're not, we're not necessarily looking or ask, or asking you to take action on this tonight unless you had no more questions and were willing to do so. Because if you asked a question, I probably, I'm not sure I could answer it. But, but it dawned on me, as we were going through these questions, that back on Budget Saturday, this had come up. And JD had provided some really concrete, concrete comments on what this project really is about. And that didn't get captured in the memo. So JD will be here on May 17th. And what we're happy to do and prepared to do is, he'll make a brief presentation so that certainly our new members and others who may have not quite remembered all of that have a better understanding of what this project is about. It's a really exciting It's a really exciting project. And, and then we'll ask the committee to authorize the interim superintendent to enter into an agreement with Enernoch for this project. In the meantime, though, if you have questions tonight, we'll note them and get the answers to you. If there are additional questions that come up between now and May 17th, I'd ask if you forward them. If you can get them to us by May 11th, we'll then include those questions and responses in the packet that goes out. And then we would, we are really looking for action on the 17th because in order for us to be able to move forward and have the installation complete over the summer, we need to have the action by, by the end of May. The one thing, one additional piece is, we just learned, the agreement in its entirety was vetted by our legal counsel. And our legal counsel suggested that we also share it with our insurance providers, legal office. There were some items around insurance. So that actually is going on. Enernoch's legal counsel and our insurance provider, MIA, the legal office is looking at the, we, at this. We understand there will be some very minor changes to the, that 36-page agreement, but nothing that will change the, the scope or, you know, the financial part of this project at all. So, so I think it's better that until that gets resolved, and it will be resolved by the 17th, we'll repost any changes to that 36-page agreement. And, and then we can go from there. But certainly willing to entertain any comments or questions at this point. And I did send an email with some more detailed information, but also provided for you a hard copy of the questions, the responses. And also, there were some other questions about some other items that came up that we've also provided answers. So we wanted, we, we wanted to make sure that all committee members were aware of questions being asked about agenda items and the responses. And hopefully that may help to, that, that may help the discussion about some of these items go more efficiently. And we'll continue to do that as we, as we go through the rest of the year.
Okay, great. Are there any questions tonight or more information that you need? Yep.
I just want to point out, when JD had brought this up at Budget Saturday, I was thinking that it was similar to the previous net metering project that, that we were very interested in. I read through the contract two years ago with the net metering, was totally confused. I'll tell you, Kate Crosby did a wonderful job of, she took a couple of hours explaining to me what, or several of us, what, what was involved. And I was wholeheartedly in on the project after Kate had explained it. All I need to see is that Kate's involved in this one. And I, I'm all in on this project as well, although it is very different. It's, it's a battery project, not a net metering project. I still had a couple of questions on the, on the, some of the terminology. There's some, there's some units there that I'm sure they make sense to the, to the Enernoch and the district or JD. But I noticed there, it seemed like inconsistency in the units of how they were describing the battery. Two, 2,000 kilowatt and 4,000 megawatt hour. And then in a different place, it's described as 2 megawatt and 4 megawatt hour. And, and the 4,000 megawatt hours versus 4 megawatt hours seem to be inconsistent to me. So I, you don't have to answer the question now, but that, that question's out there. I just want to understand the, the size of the unit.
So if you could forward that question in writing to me, that would be helpful. Is it, is it number 15?
I think it's question 15.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That was one of the questions you had already posed. Got it.
It was.
Yep. And Kate and JD have worked together on this project and Kate will be here on the 17th as well.
Anyone else from the committee? Okay, John, you want to, you have a question? Comment?
John Peterson, 6 Jackson Drive. I just wanted to comment that this project, you know, is part of a series of very important things that Facilities has done over the years. And I just wanted to remind everybody that, like previous projects, the solar panels where, you know, this district was definitely, took a leadership role, again with JD and Kate leading the charge, you know, and I think there were questions and some concerns at the time about the panels. Of course, everybody knows how that has played out. It played out very well. There have been other things that, you know, were less risky, you know, aggressive pursuit of energy-efficient lighting, you know, and the very important collaborative work of the entire school community related to power down and everything. And all of that is hugely material to the budget. And so if you just top-line what you're looking at tonight, it's $1 million over 10 years. That's a teacher just in that single activity. And I think everybody should feel extremely fortunate to have this opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Thanks, John. I think that's really important to emphasize. And the first three parts of the, of the, of the information that was in your packet really does focus on the reason why Enernoch reached out to AB to partner with us on this. It was because of exactly, John, what you just said, all of the past work, very, very successful work that the AP, AB community and the AB staff have done around the issue of, of energy conservation and so forth. So thank you for, for bringing that up.
So getting back to the potential net metering project that we had two years ago or so, I worry that my need to understand that project delayed the vote in support of it. And I have no intention of getting in the way of this project this time, so if...
Okay, great. So we'll have, oh, Mary.
Although I would say if, if there are new, like a new contract coming to us, if it could be as early as possible, it takes a long time to read through this kind of stuff.
Yeah, no doubt. And, and all that information was posted. What, I think that work's going to be done by the middle of next week. We'll get it to you and we'll highlight the changes, which are going to be, our understanding is they're very, very minimal. But I think it wise until everything is, all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed, is to wait. But we'll definitely do that.
I, you know, I think this is incredible. I think this is a definite must-do. So hopefully by the next meeting, we can vote. So, okay, I'm going to move on to number seven, Boxborough Town Meeting, and I'm going to turn over to Bridget.
Yep, so Town Meeting is the 14th and all of the school committee members are invited. Just let me know if you are going to make it so that we can make sure we have enough chairs. And I'm assuming, Bill, it'll be you and Marie and Dave from the administration, right? And Peter Light's been invited also, so, yeah, so we should be in good shape for that. Paul, sorry.
I, I usually plan to be there. If, if I'm not, it's something came up.
Yeah, so typically the, the entire committee goes to, and sits up front. And then once the vote is taken, then Acton members leave. So it's only for part of the meeting.
So it's a little bit different in Boxborough. We don't have a specific vote on our school budget. Our school budget is part of the entire town budget. Our report will be done under Reports, which is item two. And then once the whole budget is passed, then we're assumed to be done.
Right, exactly.
So it's different than Acton Town Meeting.
Diane, do you have a question?
Do you mind just saying what time?
Sure, 7:00 on the 14th.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. So 7:00 on the 14th. Great. Do you have an update with BLF or anything about the presentations?
We had BLF last night and it was basically to go over the warrant for Town Meeting. We had a brief update. There wasn't really anything to update since, we hadn't met really since before that. Question on presentations, you said?
Yeah, we all set with the...
On our presentation for Town Meeting, yeah. I'm using the slides that we used for Acton Town Meeting, Boxborough-ized, if that's a verb. Yeah, changed for Boxborough and we'll add one additional slide, but essentially it'll be a similar presentation.
Okay, well, just let me know if you need anything from me or...
Thanks, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, great.
So thank you very much.
Great.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to the 2018-19 School Committee Meeting calendar. And you have that on your table, I think it's in pink. And there were a couple of...
I'm sorry. There were a couple of changes just based on, what? Oh, thank you. I can't find mine for some reason. So we added in the Summer Business Meeting, a date for, this is not this year, this is for, this is next year's calendar.
Okay, it's for 2018.
Oh.
But it's this August.
July 18.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't realize that. So you put one in for this year? Okay, so this, this August will be the beginning of our school committee new 18, 19 year. And the meeting is on August 23rd, Thursday, and that's our Summer Business Meeting. We did change the November 8th meeting to November the 1st because the MASC Annual Meeting is November 7th through the 9th. And I know there are a few committee members that like to attend, let's see, Budget Saturday is in there. We also changed the November, the February 14th, which is a Thursday night meeting, to Wednesday night, February the 13th. Just, I know, I love all of you, but I don't know that you want to spend Valentine's Day together. We can, but maybe not at a meeting. If that's okay. So, I mean, I'm happy to, yeah, maybe a little something off, well, maybe not. So, and we also got rid of the March 28th and April 25th meetings. Those are, they're, really, those, we don't typically need those meetings. If we need a meeting, if we find that we're not able to get through everything, then we can look at it at a later time. But we've got Acton Town Meeting, Boxborough Town Meeting. So it gets to be kind of crazy trying to also do multiple school committee meetings. And then the following summer of 2019, we've penciled in another August 22nd Summer Workshop Meeting. And it would be great if sometime in the next week or so, we can nail down this July's Summer Workshop. And even if we could start to kind of decide on, at least early in the year, next July's Summer Workshop. So we don't have to wait till, no? No? Well, Mary?
I don't really know what I'm doing next July.
Well, well, that's the point, was the point was, is it, why don't we lock down a date so that it's, it's everyone else's kind of can...
I mean, we can pick a date, but I'm not willing to change my family vacation for a date that I have planned a year ahead.
No, no, that's right. Absolutely, absolutely. But I'm not sure you'll be here for that one.
Oh, yeah, I will be here. So forget about it.
But it's a good point for everyone. It's a good point for, that's just something we can think about. That's something we can think about.
I'll go away the whole month of July.
Yeah, you can, and August if you want. Okay, so I guess I'm, do you have a comment or I'm looking for a vote, a motion?
All I was going to suggest that we, maybe we send our availability to Beth for July?
She's going to contact you. Yep, so...
So I thought we were going to wait to vote this till we have the...
You know what? You are exactly right. Um, yeah, okay.
I know, but it just, it feels rude to not...
It'd be great if we could do a pen so we know where we stand and not make a decision to, to, to join us and that we can ask them maybe, but...
So not take an official vote, but tonight we'll just agree that this is where we stand?
Are we talking about this whole list of meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I don't see any problem in waiting. I think that I would like to firm up the August 23rd meeting because, you know, but other than that, I, you go ahead, you make a suggestion.
I, I think it would be helpful to, to certainly agree to the August date. That's an important, that's an important meeting for the committee to have. There are a number of updates to provide. There may be some required action based on things that may happen over the summer. And, you know, of course, there may be a member or two, because your plans changed, that can't make it, but I think, you know, that could happen on any meeting. So my suggestion would be certainly to set the August 23rd date. I, I think the rest of the dates throughout the calendar are, you know, fairly standard. And then the one thing you could do is start working on the July date, getting information from members, the current members now. And then once we have the new Boxborough, two new Boxborough members, get them to weigh in and find a date in July that works, hopefully for everyone. I don't know if that makes sense.
So my thinking was really not that we're waiting for Boxborough because maybe they can't come to one of these, but it's just really a formality to include them in a process that's going to involve them next year.
So I, I exactly, I hear what you're saying and it's, it is more of a, we are moving forward and not, and not taking into account that we are going to have two new members from Boxborough. I think Beth's concern is locking down the dates for rooms and so forth. So I, what I would like to do is I would like to say that this is, this is where we are at this point and let's lock down these dates, but let's not take a formal vote until we have all the new members on. And are you comfortable with that, Beth?
Yeah.
It's okay, you can say no.
So if we wait till the Boxborough folks come, June 7th will be their first meeting.
Yes.
They're not going to vote at the first meeting they come out if we're starting a process of inclusion. So that means it's June 21st.
So why don't we do...
But you could, no, we...
The buildings are open to the public to reserve...
But why don't we do this? Why, as soon as the elections are over, we can send this as part of the packet. So they'll have access to it and then they can vote on that first meeting.
Okay.
No, I see some concerned.
It's up to you guys.
Go ahead.
I, I think it's up to the committee what they want to do. I, I don't see two new members who are going to point and say, "I can't make it February 7th." So I think the date that is important to get feedback from the new members is the July workshop date because that would be, you know, a meeting that would be really important for new members. The other, the other helpful piece to agreeing by consensus, there's, I haven't checked the policy, but I don't think the school committee needs to take a formal vote on your calendar. But one of the things that we're trying to do at the administrative level is we'd like to get these dates out to all of the building administrators and all of the people who are involved in activities and scheduling activities through the year in an effort to try to avoid scheduling any major activity in the district on school committee meeting nights. So we did have this year some conflicts with some other activities that I know school committee members would have liked to have attended. So the sooner we can get these dates out to staff who, who plan those events and ask them to try to avoid these dates, I think that would be beneficial and helpful in the long run.
And I also, I kind of think that as we plan the next year's calendar, the previous year, then perhaps we need to do this earlier, maybe in, even in April. I think my problem is that we have, the Acton members have come on, but the Boxborough members haven't, so it feels like it's, it doesn't feel right. I think if we had taken this vote a month ago or we had set up the schedule a month ago, then everything would just kind of be fine. Go ahead.
So there are only three people running for two seats. I think we could contact all three of them now and see what is their July availability? Are they available August 23rd? The rest of the dates are standard dates for the school committee and I think it's fine.
Okay.
So I think, you know, I don't think we have to wait until...
No, I think it's more about the percept, and I just cut you off, I'm so sorry.
And then, so I'd also like to know for Thursday, August 23rd, what's the time you're thinking for that meeting? Is it a 7:00 PM meeting?
I would assume that it'd be a 7:00 PM meeting, yes.
Okay, so that date works fine for me.
Yep. Okay, well, I'm going to leave it there. I think we'll contact the other three people, just to kind of get the information out there. I think we need to, I think we do need to nail down the dates, but we can do a formal vote on the 7th, if, but...
Do you want to know right now about August 23rd, while we're all right here?
Sure. I mean, is, do you have...
Can I just add one more thing? I'm sorry.
No, but...
So, there was some thought that went into establishing these dates. And the August 23rd date, the thinking is that, that is the week where new staff orientation takes place. All of our building leadership will be there, members of the, of the central office, and certainly, you know, our staff have cleared their calendars for those two weeks in August. So, from the staff standpoint, that works, it kind of makes sense. Again, anything that might come up during the summer that really does require action before school starts, we have that. So, whether it's on that Thursday night or a Wednesday night, you know, I think that, you know, that can, it's scheduled for Thursday, which is, you know, goes along with all of our other regular meeting nights. Right. Yeah. So, so, and then, and the intention is by, on this list, by identifying August 2019 date, we're just setting a precedent that anticipate having that, you know, business meeting in the third week of August.
Can I just add something? So, I was the one who suggested that we actually do the summer dates a year in advance, and you can do it one of two ways. The last few years, what I've noticed is, we wait so late that Beth goes around and around and around, and there's, there are no weeks where at least three people are out. And I just thought, if you at least have a date on the calendar, if people have a choice when they're doing their vacations, they might choose to do it on a different week. You know, the staff who come to me, it's just hard, it's, you know, we're going into May, we don't know what the weeks are, we like to be here, if you want us to be here. So, it's just, I just wondered if scheduling it in advance might, you just might be able to more easily have a week when people can be here.
Go ahead, Paul.
I can make it August 23rd.
All right, is there anyone that has, sees a problem with August 23rd, or wants to voice that they are not going to be able to make it? Except for Bridget, who's like, fine with that, and Katie? Okay.
All right, so I'm going to just move this forward into the next...
You need clarification, right, Beth?
I just want to know exactly, just to see...
So...
Can I be to share this with the three policy candidates and say, have any concerns?
Yes, and go, and feel free to go ahead and start reserving rooms, or whatever you need to do.
So, are we putting this out as the...
I think that we are, yes.
We need to wait a week to see if I get any Boxborough folks...
That would be great.
If I do, then I'll talk to you maybe in the...
Okay.
But the number one priority from the Boxborough folks is the July?
Is the August, yeah, July, and, you know, and informing them about the, there's a problem with the August. Okay. Go right ahead. No, that's, please.
Assuming the three Boxborough folks say, yes, everything is okay, are we putting this out as the actual list of meetings?
Yes.
Or are we waiting until May 17th to make that decision?
Um, I don't see why we would need to wait. This is not something we have to take a vote on, this is something...
Consensus or...
This is, is there a general consensus that these are the dates, and we're comfortable putting them out publicly, and Beth is going to share it with the Boxborough people?
To get a July date.
To get a July date, and just an information that, as you come on to the committee, these are the dates that we're looking at. Any dissent? Okay, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for that. All right, so I'm going to move on to subcommittee reports, and I'm going to turn this over to Dawn, Policy File JKF with Discipline of Students with Disabilities.
This has been the most interesting policy we've done yet, and this is our third read. So, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Yep. Is the most recent.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
What's different from, on the blue one, from what was in the packet?
The things that are crossed out, and then the items that are in bold and underlined that have been added, or moved. In one case, there was a chunk moved from one section to another, just for flow purposes, it made more sense.
That looked just like what was in the packet, didn't it? What did I miss here?
So, it was updated for the packet, yes, so...
Oh, yeah, the second paragraph of page two is the big change. There's been a few. The, just changing the phrasing to administrator in the very beginning part of the sentence to match at the end of it.
So, nothing substantive?
No, nothing.
If it was just a little cleanup, okay.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
So, I was not here last meeting, but I watched the video, and that, as I, if I remember, the issue was on...
Yeah, that's been resolved.
That's been resolved?
Mm-hmm.
And we're good?
Yep. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion. Yep, a question.
Move to approve the Discipline of Students with Disabilities Policy File JKF.
All those in favor? Opposed, or abstentions? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Moving on to File BEDG, around the minutes, and Diane, are you going to do that one?
So, File BEDG is all about minutes, and we just updated this to just reflect, just what, make the language more precise, and reflect more accurately what goes on when we produce minutes. The Remote Participation File BEDJA was also updated, and that's it.
I'm looking for a motion for BEDG first.
Move to approve the revisions for Policy BEDG.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? That passes unanimously. And now, I'm looking for a motion around BEDJA.
Move to approve Remote Participation Policy BEDJA.
I'll second that. But I have a question, comment?
Yes.
It looks like the only real change is the, are the reasons? This is remote participation.
Right.
Okay, so the, it looks like we're getting rid of the reasons, and that's consistent with a change in the law? Is that...
I'm looking at the Policy Subcommittee, someone from there.
It was advised to make it kind of more general, so that if someone had a problem that wasn't reflected in those specific reasons, that the remote participation would still be an option.
I applaud the change, I like the change, I didn't like having that such, that specificity in it, and so, so I like the policy now better than I did.
Okay, great. So, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, or abstentions? That passes unanimously. Moving on to File NEW. I couldn't figure that out. Okay, so it's a research request from outside the district. And Diane, are you going to address this, because Deb couldn't be here this evening?
I can try to do this. So, we did have a policy, and it was really revamped. It was, it's really well done, and it reflects the federal legal requirements for, and the Protection for People Rights Amendment. It spells out the procedures for any kind of research proposal that comes our way. So, if any, I can try to answer any questions. Hopefully, I can do that, if there are any.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion. This is our second read.
Yeah, a question.
Oh, a question, yep. Angie?
So, the question is, is there any privacy concern from the state level? That's, that's all I'm asking, yeah.
Sorry, no, there aren't.
I'm sorry, no, there aren't, because, what did Deb say regarding that? So, if you look at Procedure 3B and 4C, so that's the second part of, so it's the procedures draft. Look at this. So, yep. So, 3B, the, if we, if we agree to engage in any educational research studies, the study has to assure us that student education in school district, they have to assure anonymity. So, we're not concerned about privacy issues there. And 4C speaks to the fact that the description of any data collected, and how the information, and the information will be kept confidential.
And I would add that they added under 1A, including contact information for the institutional review board, and so, anything that goes through an institutional review board is, has very strong privacy protections.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion. For NEW.
Move to approve...
So, I just want to just add that, it's actually, this is a new policy, but it's ILD, is like technically the...
Which says, code for it, yeah. Okay, but there's nothing on my, all right. It's, I couldn't figure out, there's, it's the only thing in caps that looks like it could possibly be... ILD, okay.
ILP.
It's like, okay, that's weird. Oh, so this is a brand new, what are we calling it?
Do it by the name, just approve it by the name.
That's what I was trying to do.
Oh, you haven't figured out the name yet?
Okay, so, can I move to approve the policy regarding research requests from outside the district?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At least, I got Katie to laugh, that's good. All right. Finally, our First Aid File EBB, and I'll turn that over to Dawn, and this is a first read.
This is a first read of this one. This, overall, I think, and Policy Subcommittee members feel free to chime in, a lot of this was sort of cleanup, but the nurses took some time together at one of their recent department meetings, all 10 of them, and they worked together to sort of look at this, and just make sure that it reflected what we were doing, as well as any updates that have occurred. So, really, nothing substantive in this policy, just sort of some cleanup around language.
So, if you have any questions or comments, send them over to the Policy Subcommittee, and we'll have a second read on the 17th, the next meeting, whenever that is. I think it's the 17th, 15th, 17th, I don't know. Okay, next meeting. Okay, I'm going to, we don't have anything for 10, so I'm just going to skip over 10. Oh, I'm sorry, do you have something for 10?
Well, we had the Health Insurance Trust meeting this morning. Do you want to share what you shared with us?
Oh.
Because it was pretty exciting news, I thought.
So, as you know, there are some pretty significant changes happening to our health insurance plans, based on negotiations that we had last year. And so, our regular HMOs are adopting a deductible for the first time, and we added an optional health savings account plan with a high deductible. And we've done a lot of sort of education and outreach, and really helping employees to understand it. And between the town and the schools, we have over 100 people who have enrolled in the HSA already, and open enrollment closes on Monday. And the schools alone have, I think it was 80, 75, 80, or something. So, pretty, all the, the people from Blue Cross and Harvard who came throughout the process said municipalities have a handful the first few years, they're just kind of slow to adopt, but, so we're, we're kind of excited about that. And for each plan, each family plan, our budget saves something like $1,500 per plan in the contribution as one piece of what happens. And then, over time, it also reduces claims, so...
Thanks, that's really, that's really good news. Okay, anyone else that, BLF, ALG hasn't met? Okay. So, I'm going to move into the consent agenda, and we have minutes to approve from 4 to 18, and minutes from 4, 12, 18. We have a warrant that totals $5,453,217.93. And I think, let's vote on that first, and then we'll move into the other stuff. So, yeah, what? Okay. Do you want to read those, or?
Sure.
Do they, are they reflected in the packet?
I don't think so. Right, I can't remember. That's why I emailed you the piece, I was trying not to send too many pieces of different things. Okay, so on the, on the minutes for April 12th, on page 3, under 9.1, they were talking about the superintendent's memo about reviewing the cul-de-sac bus service. And I'll just read the paragraph as it's been proposed that we reword it, and I think I did email this to everybody, but it's been proposed that it read, "The superintendent referred to the memo sent to the committee yesterday in response to some families' concerns. He does not believe that a formal safety assessment, as indicated in the memo, is necessary at this time. Mr. McAldeff also indicated that with each new year, there are some changes to bus routes and location of bus stops both before and after the school year starts. Whenever a question about bus stop safety is raised, either by parents or our own staff, the Transportation Department works with the Acton Police Department Safety Officer for guidance. He shared a guide done by the National Center for Safe Routes to School and NHTSA. J.D. Head will go through this information with staff as they plan the routes next year. He recommends no further action." And then, there was one other change requested on page 4, under number 10, in the second paragraph, we were talking about the procurement cards. And so, the second paragraph, first sentence, instead of saying, we were proposing that it now say, Angie So, is it So? Angie, sorry, Angie So asks if other options like PayPal or other mobile apps were considered, period. Dave said that the district has an account with Amazon, and then it continues as is. Those were two changes that I received, I don't know if anybody else had any other comments.
Okay. I'm going to keep going, then. We also, as part of the consent agenda, we have donations to our school. One is from the AB Travel Basketball Program, a donation of four backboards. And also, we're looking to approve the High School Field Trip to Greece and Italy in April of 2019. So, is there anything that you do not want, you want to pull out of the vote? You want to hold? Or a question? Yes?
I just want to call out travel basketball.
Yes.
A special thanks to them for the donation.
Yes.
I don't want this to go as a consent agenda item, without recognizing that that, the generous donation, so, thank you to travel basketball.
Okay, and I'm looking for a motion. Oh, yeah, sure.
For, when minutes are changed, or their requests, how is that done?
So, you send your, yeah, so you send your request to Beth, and then Beth fixes, and sometimes, yeah, so usually you get them, usually they're changed in the packet. If you, if Beth gets the minutes, the, you want to explain it?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, because you're, you're getting anxious over there.
I just want, I want to make sure you say the right thing.
I know, I know you do, I know.
I appreciate the help. So, it's a variety of ways. I mean, people sometimes will email Bill, or Amy, or myself, and say there was, I see an error in the minutes. Sometimes, you're always welcome to bring it up at the meeting, like right now, while we're reviewing them. If there's time, and it's, it's a significant suggested change, I'll type it up and repost it. You know, it, it just kind of depends how significant it is, but it's really up to you. It doesn't mean that it's automatically, this is what you have to vote, so...
And then, we just move it as amended. And then, we just move it as amended?
Right, that's...
Right.
So, I mean, for example, I wouldn't know how to vote on this particular one, because I don't remember a lot of these things being said at the last meeting during this item. I mean, I know it's online and it's verifiable, but just personally, I don't remember some of those things, so I wouldn't know how to vote on this, or I would abstain from voting, I guess, on this, just not knowing.
So, are there some things in the minutes where you feel like they were, they're not representative of what was said?
I just...
Or you just don't remember, and you just want to abstain?
I do not recall, yeah, some of this stuff being said, because I was concerned about, you know, the comments of the resident, and I don't remember this information coming forward, and I'm not saying it didn't, I'm just saying that I don't recall it, so when you change it from, you know, what we reviewed as part of the packet to something, if I had the time, I would go back and watch it and see.
Okay.
So, I just don't want to complicate or waste time...
No, that's a great question.
But I just wouldn't be comfortable personally voting on this, because I don't recall.
Do you have a suggestion, Bill?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, you can absolutely abstain, absolutely, or you can vote no and say you want to go back, and, I mean, it's up to you. Okay, yes, Beth?
Or you can suggest an amendment to what I just said.
Yep.
It's really up to you.
I wouldn't feel comfortable suggesting an amendment, because just because I don't recall something being said, it's different from me saying that I don't think it was said, I just don't remember it.
Okay, okay, yep.
But thank you.
Would it be helpful if we pulled that one out and approved everything else, and then if there's some details we need to work out with that particular set of minutes, then we...
You mean before the end of this meeting? Or vote on it at the next meeting?
Vote on it on the next one, and make sure we're all comfortable with the language. Just pull it, pull it out, stay hold.
Are you really going to go back and watch the video? Because if you're not, then we just should vote it tonight, and you can abstain, you know.
However you guys want to proceed is fine, I just was, I just, it's my second rodeo, so...
Sure.
It's my first one approving minutes, so I just want to ask a question.
Sure, absolutely. Marie, do you have a comment, or?
I was just going to say, there are timelines within the open meeting law, and I'm not sure waiting till the next meeting fits within them, is what I was going to say.
It's within the next three meetings, or...
30 days.
30 days, and this was the one we just had, right, on the 12th of April, so...
I mean, I think if, if you're comfortable, if the committee's comfortable, I think we should go ahead and vote it, and you abstain or react, because I do think that we're going to have some other minute, other things to do, but, yes, Diane?
Do you mind my asking, like, what, which parts of this did you not remember? I'm just curious.
I just don't remember the information about, and again, not saying it wasn't said, I just don't remember the information about this bus stop safety, that either parents or our own staff, the Transportation Department, and the Acton Police Department Safety Officer, and I did learn through meetings with Marie and reviewing the consultant's report, which I had not read before, and other things I've done in between, I did learn a lot more about this issue in the process that was used, and that was the meetings that were had with the resident and the review by the safety officer and all of that, and so, I just feel like I didn't hear any of that, and that was one of the reasons I was so concerned about it last time, so maybe I was just reading something while that was all said. I just, this is really more a question of process for me, because I'm going to have to vote right now, and I just wanted to ask the question, otherwise I wouldn't.
So, the suggested changes, Ginny, come from both comments that I made and directly from the memo that was, that I referred to...
Okay.
...in my comments.
Okay.
And so, so my recollection is that I echoed the piece about, talked about, annually, we look at bus routes and bus stops, because the kids who are riding the buses that year change, and the location of where they are change, and that was clearly identified in the memo, and then, and that's where the language comes from, so, you know, I'm 99.9% sure that it reflects what was, what I said.
Again, I wasn't here for that meeting, but I did watch the video, and I, as I read the meeting minutes, it kind of jived with the gist of it, the details might have been different, but I found no reason to go against these minutes, I'll support the minutes, and if Ginny feels uncomfortable abstaining, that's fine.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for all of the, for the entire consent agenda.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry. So, the intent of the changes were that, the way it was written, he does not believe that a safety assessment is necessary, and it should not be done right, I think that word should be now, given that we are moving to elementary-level, single-tier busing. I didn't say that. I didn't say those words. So, I wanted to make sure that what was communicated, both in the words that I spoke and what was actually in the memo, was reflected in the minutes.
That was my, my edit, because when I read the sentence, it just didn't make sense to me, and it didn't, it didn't dawn on me that it was a typo on not, and not sort of in now. If I had clued in on the word being now, it would have made perfect sense, so...
Diane?
And just for clarity's sake, so our minutes policy, which is, we just approved the update file BEDG, does say that minutes are not a transcript, so, just...
Yes.
So, for everyone's...
That they should reflect the spirit of the conversation that's been had, yes. Yes.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the modifications made for the April 12th minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? We have one abstention from Ginny. Okay, great. That's all I have for today. Do you have anything from FYI that you'd like to?
No.
Okay, so I am now looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So, thank you very much. I promise next meeting, I'll keep you here longer, it'll be bigger, it'll be, you know...